Welcome to the Tuesday, November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Mass General Law allows for remote participation at public meetings until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. This meeting is being recorded and aired live on LCTV. School committee members, when I call your name, please say here for the record. Kate Bean?
Here.
Emily Hansen?
Here.
Adam Rosalaba? It looks like he might be having technical difficulties.
Adam?
Adam, can you hear me?
Adam says he can hear us. Adam, we would need you to respond with a here just for the purpose of establishing the quorum. It looks like you're muted. On our end, it's showing that you're muted. Still some difficulties here, Michaela. It looks like Adam's Zoom is not cooperating.
Can we do the pledge allegiance here? Oh yay!
There we go. Alright.
Okay, we can hear you now. And now?
Yes, I exist. I am here in the meeting.
Yay! Okay, and now for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. To the United States of America. For which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Michaela, you properly had us on elementary school cadence with your recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance. It was excellent.
Oh no, I'm sorry.
That was excellent.
I just, you know, at this point, it's just, it's natural.
That's very good.
Okay, on to correspondence, and Emily's gonna read it for us tonight.
An email from Jay Aluz, dated ten, thirty, twenty twenty-five. A document from Jay Aluz, dated ten, thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. An email from C Friedman, dated eleven, five, twenty twenty-five. An email from C Friedman, dated eleven, six, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Emily.
Welcome.
And next on our agenda is approval of minutes from our October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five meeting. Does anyone have a motion?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five school committee meeting as presented.
Thanks, Emily. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Awesome. And now we can vote Adam?
Yeah.
Emily?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And a yes for me too. Next, we have public speak, so I'm not, I'm not in the room, but if someone, is there anyone there for public speak?
No one in the room for public speak.
It doesn't look like we have anyone on Zoom either, so I don't think we have anyone here for public speak tonight. So next up, we have a really exciting business with guests. We have the assistant principal and some students from the Student Advisory Council that are gonna give us an update on all the fabulous things that they do.
Alright, we'll ask the, we'll ask our Long Meadow High students to join us at the table here, so the microphones can pick up your, your comments. And if you wouldn't, as you begin your comments, if you'd introduce yourself and tell us what grade you're in and that kind of thing, so. Alright. Alright, we'll turn it over and you guys can start when you're ready.
Hi everyone, my name's Akul. I'm a senior.
Hi, my name is Abby and I'm in tenth grade.
Hi, my name's Jenny Sealy and I'm a sophomore as well.
Welcome. Florence, yours.
Alright.
So, we're gonna start with our Spirit Week. So, our Spirit Week, which was the same week of our pep rally over the past month. We included days like USA Day, Adam Sandler Day, Country versus Country Club, Pink Out, and Wear Your Class Color for the pep rally. We saw a lot of participation across all the grades, especially a lot of the new freshmen, which is great. And we're gonna be getting some feedback for days next year, but students seem to really enjoy it, which is great.
Next, we have the pep rally. That was on the Friday of Spirit Week. The pep rally, like, went really well this year, and we had, like, a lot of fun games, club and sport representation, and as well as, like, a lot of school spirit, like, mostly everyone wore their, like, grade color, which I thought was amazing. The grades competed for, like, all their games, and, like, seniors won most of them, and they actually won the pep rally, which I thought was great to, like, end off their senior year. We had a new vision of the graduate, like, award ceremony that the seniors got to participate in, like, I think it was six of them that received the award, and I thought that was great to, like, honor all the seniors that have put in four years of hard work. And we also had the great chance to watch the unified basketball team and the teacher rivalry, which is always fun to watch.
Yeah, so speaking of seniors, there were a lot of senior deadlines recently. Obviously, for per, like, on the personal level, a lot of seniors had college deadlines, but also there were a lot of yearbook deadlines to submit personal information for the yearbook that comes out in the spring. There was also the yearbook photo that happened a few weeks ago, where all the seniors gathered outside to take their class of twenty twenty-six photo. And yeah. Next up is the WMAC conference, so this is the Western Mass Association of Student Council's Fall Conference for twenty twenty-five. And this is a leadership skill-building conference for student council members. We actually had a student on the board this year who helped facilitate and run the conference. We also had Ms. Strick give a keynote address as the keynote speaker at the conference, so that was really cool. And also, on the same day of November sixth, we also had the National Honors Society induction ceremony, where the NHS Board inducted all the new members to the National Honors Society. So, it was a conference that took place in the auditorium where the NHS Board talked about the values of the society, and then they get handed out certificates and formally inducted all the new inductees.
We also have the Music Department's annual fall concert coming up on November twenty-fifth. So, groups that'll be performing at this concert include the high school's concert band, a bunch of the choral groups, including Vox, La Capella, Lancer Singers. The Win Ensemble will also be playing in Symphony Band with Concert Band. So, almost all of the music groups in the school will be performing. Preparation and training for stage crew and things like that are all underway, and everybody's really excited.
Next, we have the flag football game that will be the day before Thanksgiving, right after school. The date is the twenty-sixth. It's a Wednesday. The teams this year are Elmo versus Cookie Monsters, which I think is really fun. And it's for senior girls, and we have a couple of football players as their coaches.
So, also coming up is our annual Stroll for Strength on November twenty-sixth, which is an annual event hosted by the Sport and Event Managers Class here at the high school that honors those who have passed in the community and reaffirm strength through an annual five K race.
Oh, I'm sorry. The football team has one game left against East Long Meadow on Thanksgiving morning. And the girls' soccer team had a big win last night, which puts them into the state finals for Division Two on Saturday at two. The volleyball team, I'm not exactly sure what their record was, but they had a great season. And the field hockey team won eighteen and four this year, which was really good, and we won the Western Mass Finals. As well as girls' soccer and boys' soccer also won the Western Mass Finals.
So, quiet times at Long Meadow High. Not a lot going on. Michaela, they've wrapped up here.
Alright, thank you all so much. I'm sad to miss you in person, and I wish I could turn my camera, but things are going a little dicey here. I love hearing about everything that is going on at the high school, and Adam Sandler Day sounds like the best thing ever. That's really cool that you're try, like, doing things like that, and I appreciate sharing all of... It feels like, the way you shared it, it feels, I can imagine what it's like to be a student at the high school, so thank you. Does anyone else have anything else they want to say to the Student Advisory Council? Alright, thank you guys so much for coming, and I hope you continue to have a good rest of your school year.
Before you depart, I just wanna thank you for all of your work. It's a spirited, lively place, thanks to the administrators and the students who put this together. The current iteration of the pep rally, Ms. Drowak, how many years going now? This is three years?
And we have the green light for next year?
Yeah, and so...
And this year, we had a faculty dance team?
This is true. Mr. Landers was on the faculty dance team? Is that rumor?
We got him this year, but maybe next year.
Next year. Yeah, well, talk to me about that. We'll get him on your, on your dance team. But awesome representation of some amazing activities. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next we have school committee announcements and recognition. So, for my chair report tonight, I was just gonna share that this past week, Nicole, Dr. O'Shea, and I all had the opportunity to attend the Massachusetts School Committee, Association of School Committees and the Massachusetts Association of Superintendents Joint Conference in Hyannis. And it was, it was even better than I expected it to be, because I learned a lot, and it's just awesome to hear from all these different school committees and administrators, just what hap, the, the things that we're all facing that are similar, and, you know, kind of problem-solving or coming together and different things, and then just ideas you've... I, I love feeling really rejuvenated to continue my work on the school committee, and I'm excited about everything that I learned. And I recommend to anyone on the school committee to go next year when you have the opportunity. It was really worth it, in my opinion. And the other thing I wanna say, which was already mentioned, but I just wanna say a huge congratulations to the girls' soccer team. I actually went to the game last night, and I, I'm still, like, dealing with how cold it was, but it was such an awesome game. They worked so hard. I, I feel like every time I'm out walking my dog, they're out there practicing, and you can just tell how hard they worked, and I feel really super proud. And I'm really hoping I can make it on Saturday to the game, which is in Lomondster at the same field, which is a really nice field. And, yeah, it was awesome. And that's all I have. Okay, so superintendent report?
Just a few items I wanna mention to the school committee that we had begun lining up. Some student presentations for the school committee. I know that that's been important to the committee to have representations of student life, student activities, student learning. So, it will kick off at your December second meeting, where we will host the music mentors. High school students who serve as music mentors to younger students in the district. So, looking forward to bringing that as sort of the first group. If the committee has any thoughts on other student groups or school activities that they'd like to see represented at future meetings, please let me know. November, as you can tell, it's an exciting, busy time in Long Meadow Public Schools. I think what I appreciate sort of the attitude of gratitude that is, exists around our schools. They've really embraced sort of the spirit of the Thanksgiving holiday, and so many representations of gratitude, so many food drives underway. Our kids are very active in their communities, and I'm really appreciative of that. Couple of nuts and bolts things. We had a big meeting in this room the other day to talk about student registration. We see student registration as sort of one of our most important functions. It's when we welcome families to Long Meadow Public Schools for the first time. So, we had a team of administrators and assistants, and some folks from our tech staff, central office admin, gathered to talk about our registration practices and think about how we can improve on that, on our practices in that area. So, more details at some point in the future on that. Before your meetings, I ask our central office admin team about any items that they want highlighted, and they're always great about conveying some of their activities, and I just wanna highlight a few things. Dr. Beth Rector has fully launched our partnership with BayPath to more deeply embed our practices around universal design for learning. And so Beth has led some teams to do some walkthroughs of our classrooms at the elementary level to sort of understand our current UDL practices, to sort of take inventory of that and think about what, what we can build on. Nicole Paris-Crowe is our Director of Special Education. She proudly mentioned the full-day preschool that is up and running, and just how deeply integrated that section of full-day preschool is with the wider Wolf Swamp School through lunch and the specials, and through even embracing some of the ruler practices, our social-emotional framework. Nicole also mentioned that we have continued our partnership with LPD, our social workers partner with LPD, the Long Meadow Police Department. They have an embedded clinician that works part-time for Long Meadow Police. And so, it's a, it's a community connection for our social workers, and, you know, when there are events that require the support and help of the Long Meadow Police Department, that LPD clinician is a great partner with our social workers. Nilda Irisari is our Director of Student and Family Support, and she would want us to highlight some of the work that she continues to do to support English language learners. In particular, Nilda continues to follow up on the DESI audit of our EL practices. The committee had received a report on that some time ago. And we're also exploring some partnerships with East Long Meadow Public Schools that also is a Metco district. So, thankful that Nilda continues her outreach in that area. And a shout-out to Nilda, who, by the way, recently was awarded her doctorate in education from BayPath University. So, a lot of work, a lot of commitment by, by Dr. Irisari, so congratulations to her. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I love hearing about all the partnerships and the administrators that are leaning into other places in the community and other experts, or even departments, like the fees department, to make everything balanced and awesome for our students.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions about the superintendent report? Alright, so next we have the LPDEC Board of Directors. Kate?
Yeah, we haven't met since the last school committee meeting. The next scheduled meeting is tomorrow evening.
Awesome. I'm looking forward to hearing about it. Next is the Board of Governors. Emily?
We were supposed to be tomorrow as well, the Kate group, but we actually got pushed to December, because the information that we need to look at in the meeting is not available yet.
Okay, great, thanks. So, are you guys reading, are you meeting regularly every month, or does the meetings get rescheduled often?
So, Kate's group, I think, needs monthly. My group needs, like, three times a year.
Oh, okay.
Sometimes they will try to schedule a joint meeting of the two boards if we have to make, like, financial decisions or if we have to sign warrants or things like that. That's why we're gonna have a joint meeting tomorrow, but the, the materials that we need from accounting won't be available, so then we'll do a joint meeting in December, so it's kind of a mix.
Yeah, the Board of Directors does meet every month.
Yeah.
And are those, are the meetings, your monthly meetings, so the meeting that was supposed to be tomorrow, that's now gonna be postponed and in December, are they virtual at all? Can you go on Zoom?
No, they're all in person.
Oh, okay. Just curious. Thank you. Seal, I have no report. They had their monthly meeting last week, which was a presentation from the Federation of Children's with special needs. So, stay tuned for the December meeting, which I'll talk about later. I'll let you know next time. Energy and Sustainability?
So, they met last week. I wasn't able to attend. I wasn't feeling well. They did send me a meeting summary, just to kind of give me an idea of what they had discussed. So, they're still working on the anti-idealing campaign and looking at getting some additional, like, metal signs made and installed at, at some of the schools that don't have any. They're gonna look at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Energy Use Studies for Schools and review some school energy efficiency studies. And then they had a, a long discussion with Ryan Morrison from Tie and Bond Engineering, who came to address questions about the synthetic turf for the middle school building project. That's a hot topic for the Energy and Sustainability Committee, so it sounds like they had a really good discussion, and he answered a lot of their questions. And then the group is also reviewing community engagement efforts, looking at additional town meetings and planning educational workshops on sustainability topics.
Thanks, Emily, and I also, I noticed as an LPS parent who gets all the emails that something did go through the other principal's email about the idealing, so I was happy to see that after your last report, and I'm thankful for all the work that you all do.
Thank you.
Alright, so our student representative isn't here tonight, but we did get a very thorough report from the Student Advisory Council. So, we'll move on to subcommittee reports. Curriculum Subcommittee. I don't, we don't have a report, I don't believe.
That's correct.
We spoke about it last time.
Yep.
Um, Evaluation Subcommittee?
Has, has not met. It probably won't again until January or February, I'd say.
Okay. So then, Finance Subcommittee? Anything for Finance?
Yeah, we, we met earlier this evening. No action needed by the school committee, but we, we had some preliminary conversations regarding the FY twenty-seven budget. We do have a joint meeting coming up on December first, School Committee Select Board and Finance Committee. So, this Finance Committee will be starting to look at fees as we start building our FY twenty-seven budget. We had a conversation about building use fees. They have not been updated since twenty nineteen, so they had some data from surrounding communities and what they charge. So, there might be some adjustments coming in the future related to building use. Ongoing dialogue regarding the athletic program. And then we spent some time talking about a Chromebook Protection Plan. This was an item that was talked about maybe a year or so ago. We resurrected the plan, had a good conversation, and will be bringing back an updated proposal for implementation probably next school year, but we'll bring it to the full committee sometime later this school year.
Amazing. Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Alright, next we have New Business. So, we have a memorandum of agreement with Unit A, Appendix A, in our other salary guides.
So, item eleven A in your meeting packet is an MOA between the Long Meadow School Committee, proposed MOA between the School Committee and the Long Meadow Education Association covering collective bargaining stipends associated with our Unit A teaching contract. So, Mr. Mazza's been working hard on this for many, many weeks, and so he's in the best position to explain.
Yeah, this is, um, this is the work of a stipend committee that was created during the last contract negotiation. So, I would say this is the first of probably at least multiple MOAs that I expect to come out during the year, but we wanted to get these in place as these are affecting activities this school year. They're either new or adjusting existing rates and eliminating a couple at elementary that no longer operate. So, it is just to update language regarding compensation and/or creating clubs that have been running but not receiving compensation for a couple of years. So, this has been, this is the result of numerous meetings with the Long Meadow Education Association Stipend Committee.
Great. Thank you so much for all of your hard work, always, Mr. Mazza.
You're welcome.
And also, I mean, it is so important to keep that stuff going, because it affects the kids, so I really am thankful for it. Does anyone have any further comments or a motion?
Are these the only clubs in each of those schools, or?
No, this, these are the only ones that are being adjusted in terms of compensation or newly added for twenty twenty-six. Earlier in October, I think the school committee approved a, a sub list of all of the different accounts that we have, which is pretty much a reflection of all of the different activities that were on at the schools.
So, we compensate for programs outside of these as well that were previously approved?
Yes.
Any other questions or discussion or motions?
I move that the school committee approve the memorandum of agreement as presented.
You have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Awesome. Alright, let's take the roll. Adam?
Yeah.
Emily?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And a yes for me too. Alright, so next on our agenda is the competen, competence competency determination policy. IKFE, there is no action needed tonight, but this is a first reading of the policy about state requirements for districts to define a competency determination as a graduation for all students in Massachusetts. And actually, in one of the, we had, like, some people from federal government and from, like, state think tanks in this one meeting on Friday morning, and they were talking about how, how big this is. And it was noted that also it's in the superintendent's yearly plan, and it's been something talked about all the time, and I thought, I just was really taken... It meant a lot to me as a school committee member and as a parent of students in the district that are facing a time where things are shifting and changing that our district and administrators are already thinking about this. That's all I have to say. Go ahead, Dr. O'Shea.
Alright, thank you. Appreciate the introduction. So, this, for the committee's consideration, is a recommended policy to meet the state requirement that we define competency as part of a student's path to a diploma. We have local requirements that are outlined in our Educational Opportunities Book, and those local requirements consist of credits and courses that students are required to take. But in addition to that, students have to earn a competency determination. Now, previously, a competency determination, and you'll hear us use the phrase CD tonight for short, a CD was earned by passing MCAS exams with the state ballot that eliminated MCAS as part of the competency determination. That did not mean that the requirement to have a competency determination went away. We still need to define how our students reach competency. And so, following a lot of conversation, I think we talked to Curriculum Sub and Policy Sub about this. And Dr.
Yes, we did at both.
Thank you. And Dr. Nelson has kind of done a lot of legwork and research on this, and so we're here to present to you a policy that would, for your first reading tonight, it would be Policy IKFE. The actual policy is written in narrative form in your meeting packet, but for the purposes of discussion, we thought we would present it to you as a slide deck here. So, the actual recommended policy is in your meeting packet. This is just a slide deck that overviews the recommendation. So, uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Nelson and joining us is LHS Principal Tom Landers. So, floor is yours, Beth.
Thank you, Dr. O'Shea. Yes, so, um, as Dr. O'Shea stated as he introduced this today, um, why we're really here today is due to the fact that the state voted just about a year ago um, to no longer use the MCAS as a competency determination. And each school district, uh, was tasked with coming up with our own competency determination. A key point that Dr. O'Shea stated, but I want to reiterate, is a competency determination is required to earn a diploma from Long Meadow High School. However, earning the competency diploma does not guarantee that you will earn a diploma from Long Meadow High School. And we will go through that today. Um, I'm joined by Principal Landers, as Dr. O'Shea said. And I really, this was a collaborative effort with school, Long Meadow High School Administration and Long Meadow High School School Counseling, um, to bring forward what we have today. So, the state has said that we have minimum course requirements for the competency determination. Um, and the minimum requirements are that each student to earn the competent determination would have two years of high school English, a year of Algebra One and Geometry, one year of science, which would, could include biology, chemistry, um, technology, engineering, or physics. Um, and then starting with the class of twenty twenty-seven, which are our current juniors, they would also need one year of United States history. If you want to advance two slides, Marty.
And if I could, maybe, um, you want to, we'll pause there for a second. Before we get into the recommendation, I wonder if the committee has any questions about the need for this policy? The, the reason that we're recommending this. I, I think Beth explained it really well. But before we get to the recommendation, it might be wise to pause to, just to see if you have any questions at this stage. If not, that's okay.
I just have one question out of curiosity. Why one year of US history and that's it?
So currently, um, civics, uh, history has not been an MCAS assessment. Uh, this past school year, twenty twenty-five, they added the civics assessment for MCAS in grade eight. I believe the reasoning for that is that the state was planning to extend the history MCAS up to the high school level prior to this vote, uh, being repealed with the MCAS.
That's interesting. Thank you. Any, anyone else have any questions? Okay, you go, Beth.
Sure.
I'll be in.
So you'll see on this, um, image that we have projected right now, the minimum requirements that DESI is stating we must have for competency determination. The middle column is saying what our current Long Meadow High School graduation requirements are. And then the recommended LHS competency, competency determination. And I just want to reiterate again, earning the competency determination does not mean you will earn a high school diploma from Long Meadow High School. Our graduation requirements are more, um, rigorous. And we do, uh, want our students to achieve beyond what the competency determination asks of them. Um, but the competency determination from DESI, the minimum requirement is two years of English Language Arts. Uh, so we are recommending that at Long Meadow High School, that that is the competency determination. However, you'll see that we do ask our students to have four years of English Language Arts to earn their Long Meadow High School diploma. In math, the state is saying we can do Algebra One and Geometry, or an Integrated Math One and an Integrated Math Two sequence. Um, it, after a long conversation with our LHS math department, our special education department, uh, special education director, LHS administration, school counseling, we do believe Algebra One and Geometry is our best path forward with this. So that is our recommendation for the Long Meadow High School competency determination. Uh, that does match the Long Meadow High School graduation requirements that students have two years. But this is far more specific in that it must be two years in Algebra One and Geometry. For science, the DESI, uh, minimum requirement is saying one year. And one year is in one of our, um, main science classes, so Biology, Chemistry, Physics, or a Science, Technology, Engineering course. Um, our LHS graduation requirements are that there's two years of science. And we are recommending that students have one year in Biology, Chemistry, Physics, or a Technology, Engineering course to earn their competency determination. And as Michaela just inquired, uh, DESI is now saying that the students must have one year of US history, beginning with the class of twenty twenty-seven, which is our current juniors. Um, LHS graduation requirements call for two years of history. So one would be one year of US history and one would be a year of modern world history. Um, and recommend for the competency determination at LHS, we'd be looking for one year of US history. Any questions at that, at this point?
I, Beth, I have a question. So, if an individual meets the competence, competency determination, but doesn't meet the graduation requirements, where does that leave that individual?
So, just like theoretically, you could pass all three MCAS exams and not graduate, we would work with that student, and while that is rare at LHS, it's theoretical and it happens across the state. We would work with that student to come back if they didn't pass, let's say they didn't pass English senior year. We'd work with them on summer school. If they didn't want to do that, we'd get creative. We could work with them in the fall. We try to expedite their earning of that diploma. But, just like MCAS, you could pass three MCAS tests and not graduate. Theoretically, you could earn the CD and not graduate. The only other thing I would say is, just like most students passed three MCAS exams by the end of their tenth grade, we hope and expect most tenth graders to earn their CD by the end of their sophomore year. And then they have two more years to, to delve in more, more deeply.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Be, that, it's like you're on a track to have them get it all, all of that done by their sophomore year. And I'm happy to see, um, modern world history as an expectation.
And, and part of this is, I mean candidly, for me anyways, I'll just speak for myself. I, I, I thought when that ballot question passed, I thought we were done talking about competency determinations frankly. And, and but, um, the, the ballot question only eliminated MCAS. It didn't eliminate the need to have a competency determination. So, we've, we've been sort of sorting through a lot of DESI advisories over the last six months trying to understand how we should define competency. Um, the truth is, obviously, at LHS, our graduation requirements are a higher bar. I think what you're seeing here is probably the way most districts, Leeselands, any district I've spoken with is really pursuing it, taking this approach, the approach that, that we're recommending here. I mean, part of this is about not changing the rules of the game for the kids who are currently with us. You know, the, the, the kids who are currently with us, you know, we're looking to pass MCAS based on the coursework you see on the far right of this chart. So, we're really trying to maintain the existing approach to that competency determination, I'd say. Is that, is that fair? Yeah?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that's important. Um, that meeting I was in, um, on Friday, I was kind of going over federal updates from the Department of Ed and state updates, both legislative-wise, but also physically. Uh, I, it was a huge topic of conversation that like, yeah, they said no MCAS, but now there's like, uh, there's gonna be some kind of like pendulum swing back where they're gonna have, like DESI's going to at some point probably come up with something to say, this is what we envision a graduate of the Massachusetts Public Schools will be able to just do. And it's just down to like how they require and determine it. So I think this looks like a really great, to me, um, I know I'm more in the elementary school, but it just looks like a great path to keep kids on track to graduating from school and being prepared for the next level, whether it be college or, or, um, vocation or career.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, well said. I, I, I think, uh, there, we still feel like we're, there, there might be some moving targets we're trying to shoot at here, I think. You know, in terms of what, how the state will approach redefining competency on their end, so.
It looks like you're shooting in the right direction, especially with all the collaboration you mentioned.
Yeah, hopefully.
Um, so the timeline and the approval for this, so the state is requiring that this new policy, um, be approved by school committees by December thirty-first. So tonight, November eighteenth, we are having the first reading of the policy with the full school committee. Uh, we hope that the second reading is on December first and the final reading and approval, um, December fifteenth. Um, again, just to clarify that the timeline is that the class of twenty twenty-six must, um, satisfy the new CD requirements for this year. So they're currently in their senior year. Um, I know the school counseling department has already run everything to make sure that they know because we have had MCAS previously. Um, and then we've also have the coursework. And then in class of twenty twenty-seven, so our current juniors, we would add that US history requirement. Any questions at, on that? So, I think as Dr. O'Shea was just saying, um, and Michaela, you kind of alluded to this. Um, you know, there's a lot of talk in the state that what does this mean? Does this read, does this give an opportunity for us to look a little bit more closely about what college, career, vocational readiness looks like? Um, and I think, Dr. O'Shea, you wanted to share some thoughts on this.
Sure, and, and ask you to, um, chime in and if I, if I miss anything here. Um, you know, we do think that, and then we've talked about this at previous school committee meetings, I think, in this day and age where we're really looking to embed the vision of the graduate in, in twenty twenty-five when the realities of artificial intelligence are, are really shaping and altering learning in, in some profound ways. We think that it, we're probably at a stage where we want to really, uh, initiate a review of competency. We don't want to change the, move the goalposts for the kids who are currently with us, our ninth through twelfth graders. But, we think that, you know, this is a, a prime opportunity to really rethink readiness here in Long Meadow, in Long Meadow Public Schools. And, uh, work to redefine readiness. Uh, the, the timeline for this, given how much time this would take to, um, to sort of study, to develop some guiding principles and to develop, uh, some policy recommendations. We, we think that this realistically, eh, we're gonna, we would be in a position to redefine readiness for our current seventh graders. And so, some of the questions that we think could be part of this review is, um, how well do our current graduation requirements reflect the vision of the graduate? How do we ensure that students are acquiring the durable skills they need to be successful in the information age? Uh, we don't really know what jobs and careers our students are headed to. But we do know that there are some essential, essential durable skills. There are essential DOG-type competencies that we want to make sure students have, uh, once they walk across the stage at Symphony Hall in June. Uh, we want to think about the, the proper combination of courses and experiences that best prepare a student for college and career. And, and how well do our current course and graduation requirements align with the competencies needed to be future-ready? And then at the same time, we're paying attention to what's happening at the state level. As, as we've talked about, uh, the state has defined, uh, has a mass core, which, uh, Tom and Beth can explain better than I. Uh, but, there's, there's sort of a core set of, of courses that the state has recommended. So there's, there's a few moving parts here, but we think this is an opportune time for us to sit back, uh, engage all stakeholders in reviewing our graduation requirements and redefining competency for the, for the generation of students that are making their way to Long Meadow High School. Uh, a, a rough timeline for this is articulated on this slide. Uh, what we're imagining is in the second half of this academic year that we would, uh, form, for lack of a better, uh, term right now, a learning team. That would include students, parents, staff, administration, school committee members, if you're interested. Uh, and really to take a look at best practices, look at, uh, the research that's out there in terms of how competency should be defined for, uh, students who are leaving high school. We'd want to really do some very specific engagement with stakeholders, uh, focus groups, surveys, and, and other tools. Uh, my thought is that this group would have by the conclusion of this school year, simply a directional recommendation, not a hard policy, not a hard set of recommend, of requirements, but really some guiding principles that can guide the next stage of the work. Uh, at the next stage of the work, uh, the team would reassemble and consider, um, some very specific policy recommendations for course, credit, and/or the experiences that a kid would need, uh, to fulfill their competency determination and earn a Long Meadow High School diploma. Uh, probably in, in January of twenty seven, so a little more than a year from now, we would bring a recommendation to the school committee for how we can assure that kids are future-ready. Um, so, our graduation requirements have served us very, very well here in Long Meadow, uh, for a long time. And there's, uh, there's many features of our course and graduation requirements that ought to be preserved and maintained. Uh, there's an approach to rigor and there's an approach to academic readiness, uh, that we want to maintain. But, we think this is, this is a good time to, to take a look at how we define readiness in Long Meadow Public Schools. Uh, potentially, uh, we would look at implementation in, um, in September of twenty twenty-seven. So, as our current seventh graders join Long Meadow High School, we would be in a position to have a new set of requirements perhaps, uh, for them to earn that competency determination and earn a diploma. There'll be a lot of capacity building that needs to happen. There's a lot of professional development. There's a lot of curriculum and instruction and assessment work that needs to be done. But, we're eager to do it. Um, I think, in many ways, this is an extension of a path that Long Meadow High has already been on. And Tom can really kind of underscore this. We, we've been on a path to provide kids with the types of experiences that will make them future-ready. We've been on a path to ensure that kids are developing those core competencies. Um, and there's so many examples of that that I'm sure Tom can, can articulate. But, you know, so, how do we stay on that path? And how do we make sure that we have a proper set of requirements in place for, uh, the rising generation of Long Meadow High students? And so that's the work that we want to undertake. Um, and really look forward to engaging the school committee and the wider community in that effort. And I turn it to Tom and Beth, if there's anything you want to underscore or that I've missed or, um, highlight, feel free, so.
I would, I would underscore the fact that, uh, earning an LHS diploma means that you're ready for the next phase of your life and we want to keep it that way. We want to make sure that we're confident that when our students go on to the next phase, they're, they're prepared for success. We hear that they are. But we need to work on this now to make sure that our future graduates also can, we can also be confident of that. World is changing. Um, I will just, I think Marty, you were touching on all the, all the work that's going on in terms of, you know, culminating projects, real-life projects, experiential learning. Um, I think and hope it will be part of the discussions that, that the learning team engages in. Things that, you know, we require, we want students to push themselves, uh, whether it be capstone experience, whether it be an internship, whether it be some kind of culminating academics, experience within a certain, uh, subject area. You know, things that in addition to all of the academic learning and skillset building that, that we do, K to twelve, we want to make sure that our students are engaging in critical thinking and collaborating and being innovators and being self-directed in their learning and communicating and learning to be effective global citizens. Um, so, this is a good time for this. It's, it's timely and I think that, um, the timeframe that is laid out here is ambitious but realistic.
I throw two caveats before we, um, and, and certainly welcome any questions or comments, um, from the school committee. Two caveats. One is, um, we don't have a crystal ball on how the, what steps the state will take on this topic. Um, so that could throw a curveball at us. Um, Um, we also really don't know what this learning team will, what the outcome will be. And so if it is a, a more ambitious set of requirements, it might be something that frankly, we would have to look at for our um current sixth graders even, I know that sounds like a, a, a long way off, but the, the program development, the professional development, the curriculum, curriculum instruction and assessment work that needs to happen um takes time, so we want to, we want to, as Tom said, be ambitious, but we want to be realistic too with our timeline. So um, just to, I wanted to, you know, just a cup, underscore those two caveats. We don't really know, there, there's a lot of uh murmurs and discussion about what's happening at the state level in terms of how they're going to define competency and readiness. And obviously, we, we have to respond to that, so we don't really know what shape that will take, so. Uh, would love any questions or comments that you might have, and Beth, is there anything I missed that you want to mention?
No, I think between you and Principal Anders, you've captured everything that we've discussed over the past several months.
All right.
Thank you all so much, um, that was a really great presentation. And I just, I actually had to open up my notebook and go to the page where we talked about this. And in my notes, it says no, there are no state standards for graduation requirements. And this is wild. And I, I quoted, the guy said, we have to defang this, it's really important. And how do we get there? What is the next path? And I feel like this is the first step into the defanging this problem. I, I really loved that second question on the redefining readiness slide. And I think um Principal Anders was embellishing even more on that with like, just talking about the capstones and you know, times are changing and we have to, i- it's not going to stay the same. And we have to be flexible on how to move forward with educating kids always. Does it, questions or comments? All right, thank you very much, um, I'm looking forward to talking about it more as it develops, so, hot topic.
All right.
And next, another exciting topic, achieving accountability required.
All right. So the committee has had um this presentation in its packet for a couple of meetings, I'd say, uh, but Beth is here to provide some additional feedback on the twenty twenty five M C A S achievement and accountability results, so. There we go.
All right, so um, I know I did present this to curriculum sub already, so Emily has seen this presentation. Um, Michaela, I know you reviewed it in that packet and then it's been available for everybody to see. Um, candidly, I think we want to always remember, M C A S is one snapshot into a one hundred and eighty day school year. Um, so much progress can be measured um quickly in formative assessments throughout the school day, um, in more summative assessments at the end of units. And teachers uh at all levels, pre-K to twelve, are constantly looking and evaluating our students to make sure that uh we are progressing and meeting each child's needs um at the level that they, they are, they are needing. Um, so just a quick overview of the statewide trends, uh statewide, E L A was down um in grades through three, just a small bit, um, sorry. I flipped to the, nope, I went right to Long Meadow, so E L A was up in three points across the state. Uh, but still, they were below COVID levels. And I know that that's not something that we talk about too often here, but it is just, it's consistent through all of the data across the state this year, as well as Long Meadow, that we still are not back to where uh scores were in two thousand nineteen. So I think I'll note it now and we can uh move beyond that for the rest of the presentation. Um, grade ten across the state, uh, scores declined by six points. Um, in math, uh, students across grades three through eight remained flat. Um, in high school math, achievement dipped by three points. Science, uh, grade five showed a slight gain across the Commonwealth. Um, grade eight declined two points, and at the high school, there was a decline of three points. Um, how that compares to Long Meadow, um, our expectations for students meeting or exceeding decreased by one point, one percentage point, um, and grade ten decreased by ten points. Uh, in mathematics, grades through three eight, we also declined by one point. High school math dipped eight points compared to the year prior. Science, uh, we actually gained, uh, grade five did great, they uh gained six points. Grade eight declined two points, so that was pretty consistent with the state. And high school declined seven points compared to the year prior. Um, certainly some speculation, November twenty twenty four, that M C A S competency determination was taken away. Did students not take the M C A S quite so seriously at Long Meadow High School last year? Um, we do not know that answer, but certainly to see the drop that we saw this year um leads to believe that perhaps students didn't take the assessment as seriously as they have in years past. Uh, so looking more granularly at our achievement distribution uh year over year, so you can see twenty twenty two through twenty twenty five, how we've done at each grade, always important to remember that that cohort of students progresses through the grade, so we're not really comparing the same uh group of students um when we look at that grade level straight across. Um, but you do see fairly consistent scores, um, uh, other than some, you know, certainly jump out that there was a larger drop-off and there's a number of factors that could uh lead to that. Um, that I think some of our principals have dug in and tried to, tried to understand at a, at a greater uh detail. Um, but overall, grade three through eight, when you look at it, the overall uh meeting and exceeding percentage of students did decline by one percent, but overall, we're, we're staying pretty consistent. Um, again, we just spoke about grade ten, that's a pretty, it was pretty shocking when we saw that at first. Um, and there's reason to believe that perhaps it was due to the vote that took place last uh November twenty twenty four. Any questions at this point? So math achievement, same, you're looking at the same graph, comparing data from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty five. Um, again, I'll share that grades through three, when you look at it collectively, uh, we're decline, we declined one percentage of students that were meeting and exceeding, um, and in grade ten, there's that eight percentage point decline. Um, fairly consistent through the grade levels though, or with the cohorts uh moving through. And then science, um, uh, grade five, we were uh pleased that it was so high above the state, um, that we continue to see a little bit of growth there. Um, but really, we're seeing pretty consistent scores year to year, even in s- grade ten. Yes, we were concerned by the drop-off from seventy-six to sixty-nine, but if you look at the years prior, twenty-three and twenty-two, they were seventy-one and seventy, so we're pretty consistent, other than last year kind of being an outlier of science being really, really high. Any questions? So the accountability, so we're given a uh school accountability percentile from DESI. And this is done off of um the formula that combines um several different things, including prior year scores and our target scores for each category. You'll see that Blueberry Hill School scored the highest accountability percentile, but they are the sole school in the district that's requiring assistance or intervention, so it jumped out to us, um, went digging through the data a little bit more clearly. And as you look at that, DESI has designated Blueberry Hill as a school requiring assistance because a very, very, very small number of students with disabilities at Blueberry Hill did not sit for the M C A S last year. Therefore, Blueberry Hill's percentage of particip- participation dropped below ninety-five percent. And you can see that in the line where it's ninety-four overall, uh, right there is Marty's cursor. So such a small, small, tiny piece of data uh that DESI has been representing, that this is a school that's requiring assistance. And we just want to make sure the community knows, Blueberry Hill is doing wonderful, the teachers are doing wonderful things. Um, uh, for everybody, uh, in all subgroups are doing wonderful things there. Uh, and we're delighted with their accountability percentile of eighty-four percent. So just wanted to highlight that and point that out in case anybody in the community was wondering why Blueberry Hill is designated a school that's requiring assistance. Of course, there always is areas to celebrate when we look at the M C A S data. Um, student growth, once again, remains strong, so student growth, we want to see a score between forty to sixty percent. We saw that in every single subgroup for our students, um, in all subject areas. Uh, there was really steady growth, like from grade three through grade ten in our writing scores. So although the writing scores in grade three for topic and idea development were far lower than we would hope, um, by the time they were in tenth grade, they were right where we would want them to be. So it just shows that progression and that it's a K twelve, you know, from the words of Principal Anders from many years ago, it's a pre-K to twelve system and it's, the foundation is laid in those early years so that students are able to graduate from Long Meadow High School with those skills, the durable skills to be successful in their, their next phase. Um, grade five, science and engineering, so we were pleased uh with the, the science for grade five this past year, something to celebrate. Um, and then grade eight, overall, every single test, um, including civics, which was the first time that civics was ever um actually scored by the state, so the year prior, it was a pilot test. This year, it was scored, families didn't receive individual reports of their child's score, but we received the overall, um, and our, our eighth grade uh civics teachers are doing a great job because we significantly outperformed the state on the very first time seeing this um assessment, so. Now, areas for growth, um, we were, we were flat, flat in everything, uh, but again, consistent with the prior four years, or the four years of data that. Um, high school, again, the composite score dropped, um, but we will, we'll keep looking at that and working on that and remembering that it's a much larger picture than just one data point in one test. Uh, students with disabilities in our high needs subgroup, which high needs includes low-income, um, English language learners and students with disabilities, uh, their achievement did show declines um at all levels, grades three through ten. Um, and then chronic absenteeism of our high needs group, so again, that group of uh low-income, English language learners and students with disabilities, um, their absenteeism rates did increase slightly. So we just want to make sure that we're uh really focusing on those students and making sure that they are feel welcomed in coming to our schools every day, reaching out to families. Um, last but not least, how, what do we use M C A S results, uh, what do we do with it? Well, principals are really digging in um more directly at the school level. And then we have at the elementary level, coaches that are digging into data teams with grade-level teams during common planning time. At the middle school, meetings, the math, science, uh, social studies and E L A uh department uh quick curriculum coordinators are digging into that data, at the high school, it's the department chairs. Um, and really looking at what, what are our themes that we're seeing? Are there standards, are there specific skills or maybe a, a unit that we need to look at that curriculum and how we're teaching it and addressing it? Um, and we're, we're just making sure that what we do on a day-to-day basis is moving our students forward, the one hundred and eighty days that they're in front of us. Um, so it's one data point, it's an important data point. Um, but I think our teachers uh on a, a daily basis are looking at a tremendous amount of data that informs their instruction for the students in front of them. Um, that was a lot of information that I covered really quickly, uh, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions or anything uh I can clarify that uh might be helpful to anybody on the committee.
As you're, as you're formulating your questions, that, you know, just to hit a couple things, I, I remember um hearing a speaker once that when you approach M C A S as a tool and education, you can approach it as a hammer or a flashlight. You can use it to uh hammer away at problems or you can use it to, to shine a light on, on successes and areas for growth. And that's sort of been our approach, and I hope that last slide articulates that, that, that we try to use it as a way to, to shine a light on places where we're making progress at the individual student level, the school level and the district level. Um, and the other thing I would, I'd mention is that I, I, you know, I feel like M C A S was born at a time when schools were not as involved with regular ongoing formative data to the extent that they are now. And so nowadays, um, our teachers and our administrators are so immersed in regular formative assessments and, and periodic benchmark screening and universal screening that um those data points, sometimes frankly, we got, are, are more meaningful, they are more meaningful to us than, than M C A S scores. Um, and then final point, um, a- as this committee well knows, and I, I know I've heard it as part of our discussions here, is that M C A S doesn't measure many things. It doesn't measure your engagement in school, it doesn't measure your overall well-being, your artistic talents. It doesn't measure your um, your, your social um skills. And so there's, there's so much that um, M C A S does give us value on, but there's so much that it, it fails to. But, and I think we have sort of a healthy approach to M C A S um here in Long Meadow Public Schools. Again, using it to identify places that, where we need to grow and then also using it as a, as a way to celebrate successes as well, so. Um, thank you to Beth for, for diving into the data, there's, there's certainly layers and layers and layers of data that, that are, you know, we couldn't possibly present um at a school committee meeting, but are available to our educators and, and the public, so. Happy to, if you have any thoughts or questions, um, happy to take those.
Thank you so much for that great presentation, Dr. Nelson. Um, my one, I guess, comment is knowing that we have the competency determination. And I loved the way, and I think that's honestly part of the missing piece, is that multiple stakeholder involvement and perspective, but I would just hope that the data of M C A S is used so it can be a flashlight as a tool by that path, like the, the group that you may pull together of parents and teachers and whatnot to kind of drive the competency determination, especially in the lens of the um, the students with disabilities, because that's really the subgroup of students that um impacts our district the most. And um, I think there's many great, like just local stakeholders of parents and students we have that could help us, but I hope we use these, the M C A S and some, not, you know, like you said, it's just a one tiny part of a big picture, but I do hope that we use, use it as we move forward with that group to decide on competency determination, especially in the subgroups that are still, we need to s- shine the flashlight on. I like that, I like that a lot.
That makes sense, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so next we're moving on to um building use requests.
Yeah, in your packet, there are uh five building use requests. They are the uh dance recitals that uh we have for the spring. Uh, we have the artistic dance conservatory, looking for use of the high school caf, uh auditorium, classroom and parking lot, June thirteenth and fourteenth. Uh, the Dance Dynasty, looking for use of the high school auditorium multipurpose room, May twenty-ninth and thirtieth. Dance Inc., uh, requesting use of the high school auditorium, classroom, multipurpose room, June eleventh and twelfth. Impressions Academy of Dance, uh, requesting use of the high school cafeteria and auditorium on June seventh and eighth. And then the high school parks and rec department uh is requesting use of the high school auditorium, classroom and multipurpose room on April twenty-seventh, May eighth and ninth.
Thank you, Tom, um, just a reminder, if a committee member wants um to talk about one of the consent agendas, then we have to remove it from the consent agenda. So does anyone have anything in this consent agenda they want to discuss separately? If not, um, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that the school committee approve the consent agenda for the November eighteenth, twenty twenty five school committee meeting as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Set back in.
Great, now let's take. Great. Now let's take our vote call vote. Emily?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
Kate?
Yes.
Hey, Zach? And how do you vote, Zach?
Yes for me.
And a yes for me too. Sorry, they just literally zoomed in on your face, so I didn't even see you there.
I snuck it.
Thank you.
It may be muted, Michaela.
Oh geez, I'm sorry. Next, we have our middle school building project update.
All right. I will be, I'll be prompt here for you. I wanted to just share one slide from a recent building committee meeting, just to give you some sense of the activity of the building committee and our administrators and educators who are working with the design team. And so this slide here depicts the, the meetings that have been underway to help us, get us through the DD phase, the design development phase of the middle school building project. And so you'll see that we have had site design meetings on November 3rd and 4th. The design team was at Glenbrook and Williams. We also have pulled together a design advisory group of our educators to provide some feedback on the educational spaces inside the buildings. And then meetings with town officials, the design team, their consultants, administrators, to work on things like the, the data infrastructure, the school security, the outside turf, site utilities, the enabling work that refers to the schedule that Fontaine Brothers will follow to get the construction up and running, how they'll stage the work. So that's just a, a small sense of how busy November has been. And we've been intentional and purposeful and the design is coming together. And I thank all the town officials who've been involved in these meetings, DPW, LPD, LFD, Parks and Rec, you name it. Town officials, town staff have stepped up to provide some critical feedback and direction at these meetings. So I thought that would be helpful, just to give you some sense of the, of the work, the activity that we've been involved with in recent weeks. So if you have any questions about the progress we've made or upcoming work, I'm happy to try to answer.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions or comments? It's exciting that there's still so much progress going on. I know it doesn't get as much public attention, but a lot is happening and it's very exciting.
Yeah, the, as a, as one of the, as Dory Brooks had said, or maybe it was Christian Whitson, had said that the, the design, the designs that are presented to teams get more and more boring as the design development progresses. When you're, when you're at the schematic design phase, which we were in back in the fall and early fall and summer, the designs are, are more accessible and more readable to the, to the general public. But as you get into the detailed design, it gets less and less appealing, I'd say. But they're doing a great job of walking us through all the, the key decisions that have to be made.
Yeah, and I'm thankful for the people that sit through, you know, the meetings that probably are more difficult to sit through and hear because you're not used to coming at it from that level or at a level of expertise. It's totally different. It's exciting for the district to have people learning about this.
Absolutely. That's it from the, on the middle school, on the middle school project.
Great. Thank you. So next, we are going into our executive session, that we will reconvene in open session. There's a motion for that.
I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A. Purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for collective bargaining session with Unit A, B, D and E non-union personnel. Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. And seven, approval of minutes and to reconvene into open session.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. All right. Emily?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
Zach?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And a yes for me too.
So I'll, just to, for our partners at LCTV, we do plan to reconvene into open session following this executive session.
Okay, we'll be here.
Thank you.
Welcome back to the November 18th school committee meeting. We're retiring from the executive session. And we have one last item on our agenda to discuss. It's the memorandum of agreement. Are you, do you want to speak to it or?
Sure, we have, so there's two memorandums for the school committee's consideration. One is, one covers coverage for Long Meadow High School world language class. We have a staffing vacancy that would require LHS world language teachers to take on an additional course section. And so the MOA is needed to recognize that the covering teacher, who will be performing the additional duties, would be compensated accordingly. So that's, that's the first memorandum of agreement for covering LHS world language classes.
So now we go into, do we need a motion?
We would need a motion and for, for a vote, yes.
Okay.
I move that the school committee approve the memorandum of agreement as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Emily?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
Kate?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And a yes for me too.
And the second memorandum of agreement is similar. This one is for coverage of LHS math classes. Similarly, we have a staffing vacancy that would require some LHS math teachers to take on additional course sections. And the MOA is needed to recognize this and compensate them accordingly.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move that the school committee approve the memorandum of agreement as presented.
Thank you, Emily. Do we have a second?
Second.
Emily?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
Zach?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And a yes for me too. And I think that we just have one final motion on the table. Nobody wants to adjourn the meeting?
I move that we adjourn our November 18th school committee meeting.
Sorry.
Do we have a second?
Adam's second.
Oh, I was giggling over the second. Thank you, Adam. Emily?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
Kate?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And a yes for me too. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.